All right, we'll call this meeting to order July twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. At Oak Ridge City Hall. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider it a republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. James, is Jackie online or someone else doing the roll call? Go lead, please. Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Excuse me.
Counselor Johnson.
Excuse James, yeah, okay.
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Counselor Carter.
Excuse.
Counselor Hollis, here. And Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Thanks, go lead. Next is additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. Anyone online? Have any corrections or adjustments? In the room, Counselor Hollis, anything? I do have one. Police chief has some pressing business, so we're going to move fifteen point two, which is his report, to just before item nine. Which is appointments, so you can get him out of the room and over the lull. With that, we'll go into public comment. I'll start on the Zoom platform, or is there any public comment on the Zoom platform? Don't see anything in the room? Any public comment in the room? Please come forward and state your name and city of residence.
Hello, my name is Wayne Paul. I live in Oak Ridge, Oregon, at Hageas Point, two-two-seven Y Drive. And as you folks may have heard, that there was an incident going on a wide drive where there was a trailer parked in violation of code ordinance in the middle, out in the front yard. And there was also clutter, trash, and human waste. And disposed and rotting food sitting on out. That, I'm happy to report, has been removed. The trailer has now been relocated to another town. However, it cost me five hundred dollars to contact the owner of that trailer and work a deal with him. And so we got it moved. I basically had to buy it, have it moved to someone else's property, and they became the owners of it. I was simply a go-getting situation. That's the good news. The sad news is the amount of grief that went through in cleaning up that trailer. My goodness, that was a horrific experience. I have never seen such gross filth. Partly eaten this, partly eaten that, rotting meat. It was a real nightmare. And not to mention, we also found human waste in the trailer that we had to clean out. Some human waste on the property. Ladies and gentlemen, all this was against city ordinances. Which I and other neighbors around Y Drive were keen to observe. But unfortunately, it seems like we lack in some enforcement in these codes for certain individuals. It seems like that if the last name is Houston, you get away with a lot. Now, I'm not talking bad about the police because they came by, they dealt with the main perpetrator, which is Jed. They dealt with his father, which is Danny. And it just seems like that they they hear the rebuff, they just keep on doing it. And I'm now worried that perhaps he might go and try to get another trailer and re-instigate the same thing, maybe even try to make it worse. At this, I call upon the city to try to reach out to him and discourage him from taking future action like that and try to preserve at least the integrity of our neighborhood. As far as I know, Jed moved up to the top part of the least of a new six. At least on the bottom. And currently extended and selling down. So I hope that this will end here, but in case it doesn't, I'd like to call upon the city to at least have a letter of recommendation or course of action to discourage such activity from reoccurring. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment in the room?
Yes. Jason Nevin, Oak Ridge, Oregon, four-seven-eight-four-nine, my sentence. Well, I'm on the Parks and Community Services Committee. We've been discussing many things, and one of those things that we've been discussing for a few months now has been the asphalt contract that proposed, which I'd like to give you each counselor here, another kind of updated version that we've been working on. And if you want to see over there. But basically, so timelines and I do probably, could I bring Tom up here with me?
Yes.
He's gonna kind of fill in with.
Tom Lyons, Sullivan, Oak Ridge, Oregon, four-seven-seven-zero-four, Beaver Street.
So we've been working on this thing, me and Tom, and kind of going back and forth, Bell Solutions and various other organizations such as OTA, which is a great shirt of lines. And pretty much everyone's in support, and the Parks and Community Services Committee is in very much support as well. And our next ask is going to be basically nine thousand dollars, possibly from the O I P funds, to get a basically a study, feasibility study done from Bell Solutions themselves, to do a site that is rendering to feasibility. That's pretty cheap for feasibility, right, but they will come in and take care of all that. And we will also, in the meantime, to get something on the August agenda and actually have a full agenda item here. Sure, we'll get the bullet points for what they will exactly do and have to ask, we've got that ready. So we'll have a better proposal, some more.
This is kind of just a lot of info that we've been sharing at some of the previous meetings. Organize, give you some visuals on it.
Yes.
And plans, a little bit of current update.
Yeah, so the back page here is the map of kind of what might happen at the O I P if we are able to.
And I know, I'm sorry we didn't get it on the agenda.
Oh, that's.
This week, but yeah, just got.
We're actually, it's kind of a blessing because then now we can kind of really dig deeper, get a really good proposal together. Nice. More information.
Would this be a city-owned park or?
Yes. Yep, it would be, and it's on our plan, so there is no zoning changes.
Yeah, that's the route it was going down.
We've been having some talks lately with COCA, next step we report, and some of that would also include what the infrastructure is involved, additional parking town, what the signage, parking, and continue to do that. I'm impressed, so we can talk to you, figuring out those next few steps.
Thank you very much.
You realize it's a long game, so.
Yep.
Take a little bit of time.
Exactly.
Jason, you have one more question from Counselor Kenyon.
Oh, sorry.
Um, the contract in Salmon Creek Park, would the person for that be the existing parking that's over by the playground?
Um, yes.
And just no additional parking, probably utilizing the existing parking.
And that would be, I guess, we're kind of shooting big here, you kind of want to be at the O I P, but it's only available to us.
Thanks, James. You have a public comment on the Zoom platform? One more time in the room, anybody? Counselor Kenyon, I'll circle back since she, we got delayed by the train. Did you have any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda?
No, I don't have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we'll go on to Mayor's comments. I've got a couple. If you look, we got an article published on Mountain Bike Oregon about their event here a couple of weeks back, and it's a pretty good article, not only about the mountain bike activities, but about small rural towns. So I encourage you to look at it. You can find it, the link is on the agenda here, which is kind of a dead link, but if you get to mountain bike, this link, you'll find it, but it's also, I think it was published in the Highway Fifty-Eight Herald, if you're interested, or you can just do the internet search. Next, Concerts in the Park, number two. So last weekend, they had three bands here, went out there, it was a little warm, but it was certainly a wonderful experience and good bands. If you don't hear very often out of Oak Ridge. And so I encourage you to consider coming out. It's free. It's this Saturday, July twenty-second, starts at noon and goes till nine P M. And I think I might even have the bands here, let's see. Want to name the bands, James?
Uh, yes, Dubious Roots, Satori Bob, and Simple. And the supplier posted up there with one of the QR codes that you can scan.
Suggested to be cooler this weekend, so come on out. Lastly, I'd like to mention that, and I think we're still on track with this, James is Representative, State Representative Charlie Conrad is scheduled to be here next session. August sixth. He, they've kind of redistricted a little bit last time around, so he's relatively new to us, but he's local, he lives in Dexter. So I encourage you to come out and listen to what he has to say and provide input if he asks for it, because he's a good guy, and he's been through, and they went through a tough session this last session, as you know, so. Anyway, come on out, and that'll be the next regular session. With that, I'll go to Council comments and announcements in the room. Any announcements, comments, Counselor Kenyon?
Actually, Mayor, I apologize earlier, I said no adjustments to the agenda, but I just thought of something I'd like to propose now would be to remove a table for future meeting, the which item is, it's the council rules, procedure ten point six. I actually feel that it wasn't updated as we had discussed in that meeting, so I think that it needs either another work session or more time allotted for discussion with the council to make corrections than we probably have in this meeting.
So I didn't see anything that was contrary to what we discussed, and I know there was one item that was still waiting for submission from the attorney.
Is that the appointments?
Yeah.
Okay, then why are we even addressing if we're not going to tackle that at the same time?
James?
My thought was that we had consent on all the current changes. So that I assume we'll pass since we have consensus. That will be our question once the city attorney gets back with suggested language to do so.
So that was my reason was that particular section, it didn't look like it was updated, so I don't know, that seems like double work. Yes, it's, because then we'd have to do another, either repeal and replace or a whole new ordinance.
Well, I don't, but I agree. Zoom use on that because according to the rules themselves, they can be amended on simple motion.
I would also like the table, I was missing two counselors, and it's a pretty big topic for our council, so it makes sense that everyone's present to discuss.
Any concerns by table, not table, but postponing it till August sixth?
Or do we? Yeah, there's no necessity to change it now. I will follow the general principles we agreed to, which I've already done for this meeting, the rearrangement schedule. The new rules won't take effect until being after the change, so, yeah.
So I would suggest when we get to that agenda item that you make a motion to postpone it.
Okay. Thank you, that was all.
Great. Again, anybody, any counsel on the Zoom have comments?
I do.
Okay.
Two things, one, Wayne, and he already, so the first gentleman that spoke has left already, but I think that this matter with Wayne and actually not just Wayne, but Stan and the entire community that area has gone on for many, many years. I have been there as a counselor, as a firefighter, and I think the whole area really poses a huge threat to the community and the council should put it as an agenda, a future meeting, and talk about what we can do as a council to give our law enforcement a little bit more tea, if there is anything. I know sometimes their hands are tied on certain issues because maybe we don't have a certain ordinance in effect, and I'm not saying that is exactly the problem here, but I think we should have a real candid conversation with our community and also our police chief to find out what we can do better to support our law enforcement and also our fire personnel. It's very dangerous suicide and knowing that Jed is back up there again. Positively say there will be another fire very shortly.
Would it be fair to the staff to just ask them to defer, turn it back to a staff report and let the police chief? I probably want to do my report and just.
Yeah, well, I would, I think future, because I think we need to invite the community, and there's people in that area neighborhood that I've been reaching out to me well over a dozen times that aren't present here. So I think it would be nice for them to be able to be a part of that discussion.
Right, so James, if staff could provide a staff report on that issue in its entirety, the next council meeting, if possible, otherwise they were following.
And the next thing I wanted to bring up was, so last year I was present in several meetings with Jay Swardall, who is the chair of a group called Five Rivers Cleanup Group, and they are asking for anyone in the community to support them in one of their recent causes, which is to close some of the dispersment campsites that are the big ones that we have transient parking RVs in, and you know, a lot of them you know of, like the one right there at Fish Hatchery that had five RVs parked there at one point, so not every dispersment campsite, just the real ones that pose a threat and that are just terrible, the one that you come into town where there's the mattress system, Denver RV, the one right on the other side of Green Waters Park, so I want to say there's about five, but please contact Jay if you feel like you support them, it's really, really, really helpful. I am going to write a letter as a city counselor and a firefighter because I think there's most reasons, but I'm sure Brian is going to support them, and so any.
Ten point eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I really, anybody in this community that I'll little support would be awesome, and that needs to be invited twenty-fourth.
Great, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, nothing else seen. No consent to agenda today, so now we're down to fifteen point two, which was moved up. And that is the police report from Chief Martin.
Mayor, Council, and Citizens, Oak Ridge Police Department, G S A, but the council already has that, but there was twenty-one case reports from three to fifty incidents, pre-arrests, four eight seven three violations issued, no police officer holds, Oak Ridge with twenty-one case reports, and three hundred nine calls, interreports, Westford reserve case report sixteen interreport slash calls and nine point five hours of contract time, zero case reports, twenty-five interreports, and contract hours of forty-six point five. Or fines for the month of June were over municipal purpose, eleven thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars, one thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars, and we can ensure purpose zero. The officers have been playing basketball, James, or some community policing stuff. Also, Senator wanted me to give a report on my Washington DC trip for legislators, so I will move into that. About a month ago, I went to Washington DC with, for the Chiefs Association, met with either staffers or actual representatives of both the House and Senate. And that was with lobbyists, the Chiefs Association supports, the Sheriffs Association supports, and the police, all the associations of cities and county engineers support, and it's a, called the Coulation of Bigger Trucks. And what it is, there's a right now, trucks for the most part, except for some special rules across the nation are captive eighty thousand pounds. And basically, the big companies, the very, very large trucking companies, I'm sure, so they are wants to move up to ninety-one thousand pounds and even up to a hundred thousand pounds in weights, which is a huge difference, both in safety and the part of people I think was infrastructure. There was a study done just for Oregon bridges, and these are bridges owned by cities and counties that just the cost of replacing or upgrading the bridges for ninety-one thousand pounds is three billion four hundred eighteen million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars, so you see that numbers, it's a crazy amount. So the Houston Association, the Sheriffs Association, and the city county engineers all had letters that I presented with the lobbyists from Coulation of Bigger Trucks. And and then we met met with Representative Vance, which is the congressman for pretty much east of us, the police in Oregon. Congresswoman Chavez Neber, she is like Platteville County, the Shuks County, that kind of area. And then Representative Sliness, who she is from Portland area, I met with those three in person, and then met the staff from oil and Uche Meeting, I think I'm pronouncing it right, and then met Whitey staff, and then earlier in the month, myself and a lobbyist and chief associate, we met with Senator Mercury's office, we met with him quite a bit, he's been a champion for this. So that's, it's kind of interesting to note that it's bipartisan for and against, so it's not really a Republican or Democrat issue, or there's some on both sides that are for and against it, so it's kind of an issue. And there, in our group, there was a police chief from Texas, myself, a county commissioner from Florida, another retired police chief, and he's the attorney for the Texas Chiefs Associations. Chief from Pennsylvania, and the chief from Washington. We are all there, and we met with our representatives from our states during that time. And then on a side note, in my meeting with Congressman Vance, he didn't want to talk about the truck stuff because he's for it, so but he wants to give us extra money for forest fires. I thought that was really interesting, that he just wanted to talk about that, we didn't really talk about the issue that we had for. But he is a champion with us, and he has said that he would like to meet with our representative, who's oil and work together with her on some separate issues for forest fires.
Okay.
It's kind of an extreme thing, he wants to just cut down a mile or two, it's five degrees around Oak Ridge.
That sounds like a good time to break to me.
Yeah, he said, he said every time he drives through Oak Ridge, he does not want what happened in California to happen to us, so.
Very nice.
Yeah, so. He's not even a representative, but he thinks about it, so I appreciate it, so thank you, and then we'll be conversational with him about if this is more helping, so. Any questions on that?
Yeah, one, so they pass this, say hypothetically, they pass this, wait, then would the cities and counties be required to update their bridges, or would the trucks have to divert at that point if they were?
Well, it's, it's interesting because it's the same with our state law. I have to explain this to people quite frequently. There's like their home base, their point of origin, for instance. A lot of the laws, it's just interstate, some state highways.
Yeah.
But they, they have to follow that per se, but if they're making a delivery, they can deviate. If they are going to their, like the rubber trucks, they can deviate, so that's their yards where that, so they're not willing, and you can like go to their yard. That's the interesting thing is if they are supposed to be on I five and they go between ninety, fifty-eight on ninety-seven to get to bend, because they're doing a delivery, that's perfectly fine, so. That's the, that's the part of law use trying to.
Not even though they're over the state porking, whether they're birds.
Yeah.
They could, they could collapse.
Yeah, plus there's, we have the troopers out there that, or.
Interesting, okay, thanks. Any other questions for Chief Martin before he hits the road?
Actually.
Oh, you have more?
Well, did you have more? Go ahead, because I was going to ask about this.
Yeah, so also the the council asked for this, this administrator, on this about the dog shooting case, on June twenty-fifth, approximately seven thirty-nine P M, the police department was dispatched to seven-six-three-six-zero Rainbow Road for a report of gunshot to a dog, the Oak Ridge police officers arrived to find the dog from the gunshot, and after investigation that involved interviewing the victim of the dog attack, interviewed witnesses, revealed video footage from the property and interviewing the dog owner. The shooting of the dog, if justified for self-defense, the dog owner was cited for Oak Ridge business dog ordinance violation under. And then I'll read that portion that there's been some concern about, but it says, so it's subsection, why do I believe twenty-two, it's an ambitious dog running at large, because of its disposition or disease conditions, it's too hazardous to apprehend, may be destroyed by a police officer animal control officer, or by a person acting in defense of persons, the person's family, person's property, or another man. So there's a, the fence in our hand, the ordinance to to use force against an animal, it's positive issues there, so.
That, what you just read is from our, our ordinance?
Anything else, Chief?
I did have one thing to start off with, the council could think about, what, it was a hall set. It's one of our biggest things, and we need to be able to abate, and we need a charter change for that in terms of nature.
I remember we talked about a little bit of this a couple of years ago.
If people cooperate, that's just fine, but for us to forcefully abate, we need a charter change, or you can have.
Be a good time to talk about it openly and then forward it to the admin committee.
Yeah, I was going to suggest maybe if you have the opportunity to come to one of our community meetings and kind of lay out what would, what part of the charter would need to be changed, and what your ideas or thoughts are on the matter so that we can make sure that gets addressed when we get.
Yeah, with James' permission, I know last year Matt said he was willing to do that, he himself.
You know, it also had a funny, it's the issue, because it costs on average three thousand dollars to get to that.
Get rid of what?
Get rid of the trade of three thousand.
Oh.
Certainly five thousand.
I had a question on the dog, right, was the victim actually dead?
It didn't break this, yeah, I don't think, but yes.
So for somebody to be a victim, do they have to be dead by a while?
It's there, it's, it's there.
Perception.
Perception of defending themselves, or maybe be similar with.
If a dog runs on your property and essentially somebody feels threatened by, then they can be a victim?
And that's, I, I probably, well, to clarify that, it's both their property.
I know.
So on a side note, the property owner, which is different, was cited for illegal occupancy, because those houses, those residences are not legal, so. And the dog, the property owner gave the dog owner chains because he was concerned before that, and asked him to change the dog up, change the dogs up when they're outside, so, and he actually bought them changed.
So if they would have made it with some of my mother. And of course, if there were additional eyewitnesses at time, that changes scenarios slightly, but in a lot of these cases.
Yeah.
Counselor Hooker, did you have a question for Chief Martin?
Yeah, just real quick, and it has to do with the abatement part of it. I understand that's expensive, and we don't have the funds for that. Um, my thing is, I guess, even though people can't afford it or don't, you know, don't have the money for it. One instance that I know of, and I'm sure you know too, Chief, keep citing them. I mean, there's one there that maybe he doesn't have the money, but.
There's, there's been a couple there that have been cited a lot, so the signing doesn't clean it up, though, if they're not going to cooperate or worry about. Uh, there's, there's been a couple there that have been cited a lot. So the siding doesn't clean it up, though. They're not going to cooperate or worry about.
But can you not continue to cite?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Martin? Chief, try safely.
And it's have to go to.
Benita, oh, sorry about that. All right, moving on, it's item nine, which is appointments, nine point one. It's Administration Advisory Committee, Ms. Chris Winchester.
Yes, oh, Miss Winchester, uh who already serves on the Charter Review Committee, applied to serve on the Administration Advisory Committee. I recommend her appointment. She's got a degree in English. Already proved her value in the Charter Review Committee. Very good editor. I think she will be excellent on the admin committee as well. Here are your questions and your application concluded.
All right, well, I'll make a motion first and that's I move we appoint Ms. Chris Winchester to seat six of the Administration Committee. For a term expiring in December of twenty twenty six. Okay, it was a motion made by me, seconded by Counselor Hollitt. Uh now we're available to ask questions of Ms. Winchester.
Can I stay here or should I come up there?
You can stay right where you are, ma'am.
Um although I don't really have a question because I'm familiar with your uh abilities and appreciate them very much. On the uh Charter Committee that you're on, I know you'll be a wonderful asset to our. Admin committee, and I just wanted to let everyone know, uh because of her interest, she actually intended. And quasi participated, she shouldn't vote on anything, but she helped us a lot last night in our admin meeting. So um it's gonna be a pleasure having you on the committee.
Thank you, Donna.
Any other questions? Well, I did have one comment, uh your application, I saw this grant writing expertise and that really. Woke me up. So hopefully you'll take on some collateral duties if needed.
Uh that was a millennia.
We'll get you a long-term grant that you can. Anything else in this one just before we go to a vote? Okay, again, the motion was I move we appoint Ms. Chris Winchester to seat six of the Administration Committee for a term expiring in December of twenty twenty six. Colleen, could you call for a vote, please? Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Hi.
Counselor Molly.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
You, congratulations, welcome aboard, number two. Uh moving on to ten, business from the City Council, ten point one. Oak Ridge Keg and Cast Festival R T M B funding request. James, you wanna introduce this?
Yes, all right. Uh it's the Oak Ridge Keg Cast Festival, celebrating fifteenth year. Uh when the event is coming up Saturday, August twelfth, three eleven P M. Um, council recall, the last meeting approved uh the event and street closures for that. They also uh have requested six thousand five hundred dollars in R T M B funds. On July eleventh, the R T M P G R T did met for the D S Bation. It was immensely recommended and City Council award. Two thousand four hundred ninety four dollars and ninety cents in R T M B fund. The reason that's specific of an amount is because that is all is remaining in the R T M B fund account at this time. And also the maximum allowed uh for R T M B is two thousand five hundred. So it's just five dollars, and then short of that, we do expect more R T M B funds in November, approximately nineteen thousand. Uh but by the current rules, we cannot give out money that we do not currently have. So uh yes, the Keg Cast Festival is a big received support since many years. We don't have the data for. Look back full fifteen years, but um. You know, the last year, they received three thousand three hundred eighty three dollars and three cents. Twenty one, it's a thousand seven hundred fifty, two thousand. And sorry, twenty twenty, you receive two thousand dollars. So it's a recognition from the committee, my application is included. And I believe Amy Kelly, one of the best organizers, is online.
And so our P M, our R T M P committee reviews of rules of the application when they go over this.
They do. And so in in the rules, um there there's an exception, which which. So a person can apply to the result if they wanted to, like checking box for if the event was special.
Like an inability to play.
Right, like it, yes, correct, the event could not proceed without.
All right, do I hear a motion, please?
I move we approve two thousand four hundred ninety four dollars and ninety cents in R T M B funds. To the twenty twenty three Oak Ridge Keg and Cast Festival and. Stipulate that moving forward, one thousand dollars will be the maximum amount they are eligible for.
I'll second.
Counselor Coker seconded. Okay, made like motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Coker, uh discussing.
Um, may I?
Sure, please.
Um it was actually mentioned in the committee, the committee members recommended that we have that as part of our. Motion. I know that missed, but you remember that?
I do, I do.
Yeah, so that that was a recommendation by the committee that they would do it this time and then moving forward one thousand only.
So is that just for this type of event or for all events?
Um that was specifically for the event we were reviewing.
Okay, so we're singling this out, just one organization out for a a cap or is it?
No, it's because in our rules, it actually says that after five years of of any event receiving R T M B funds. They're only eligible for one thousand dollars. The committee felt that. Um even though they asked for six thousand five hundred, I think it was. That if we only granted them one thousand dollars, the amount that would be left in the account would be minimal.
Right.
And they really stressed anyways online that they needed it. And um so the committee agreed to go to that maximum amount that we have available right now. But that moving forward, one thousand would be the maximum amount. I mean, they've been getting it for since two thousand and eight, so they're way past the.
Okay, any other uh Counselor Hooker, please?
One quick question, and I I don't have the rules in front of me. Um, on the R T M P money, um I know it's nonprofit and that type of thing. However. Um. Is it, are they supposed to pay for stuff first and then? Do the like, put the money out is my understanding and then ask for them, I mean, and then get the money? Or do they get it upfront? If you could explain that to me?
They submit receipts for reimbursement and Colleen goes through them and then she reimburses up to whatever amount we council approved.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Hollitt.
Um, I guess my concern is this has been such a bonnet contention for years on events, on how to figure out. What amount they should get. We spent last year developing this rule and this policy. And this is, here we are again, not following our own rules. So, I mean, I absolutely understand. I also do events and I am concerned about, you know, future doing the Fourth of July event. Um, that is one event I worry about. I don't know how it will go on if we don't have money, but I am trying to put things in place. So that I have sponsors and things like that to fund for that event. So I just hope that the council realizes that if we're going to continue to not follow our own policy. That we need to make sure we're not discriminating other events and we allow that same consideration for other events that are asking for the money when. So I I absolutely understand the position that the county they cast. And um Amy and Kelly is in because it is very difficult to be an event coordinator in Oak Ridge. There are not a lot of sponsors. It is very difficult to put together these events. So I guess I just, I hope we have some type of consistency if we're gonna either follow our policy or not.
Okay, any other comments?
I would just say that I conferred that um uh Counselor Hollitt. Uh unfortunately, the committee is fairly new. We have reviewed the rules already multiple times. And in full length discussed, uh. You know, making these decisions affects the rules and they still felt. That was uh what they wanted to do in this case, so.
Can we hear a little bit from Amy on how um the event coordination is going and how much you guys need the funds?
She's online, is she online, Colleen? Unfortunately, no, I guess.
I didn't see her name.
Yeah, Colleen says she's not on the line.
Was it up there earlier?
I don't remember checking in. Okay. Any other discussion before we go to a vote? All right, so if I can get this right, Counselor Kenyon, I move the motion was I move we approve. Two thousand four hundred ninety four dollars and ninety cents in R T M B funds to the twenty twenty three Oak Ridge Keg and Cast Festival. Stipulating, we wrote it out, okay, and stipulate that the movie, that moving forward, they will only be eligible for one thousand. All right, um Colleen, could you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hooker.
Nay.
Mary Clinton.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
All right, motion passes, I believe, is that right, Colleen?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, we're down to ten point two, that's Parks Committee. T R T funding requests for Banner Park kiosk sign, James?
Right, the Parks Committee um has recommended in there requesting five thousand fifty dollars. Up to that amount rather, the T R T funds for the construction of Banner Park kiosk sign. Uh the total cost uh is estimated uh by contractor bids to be around eight thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Um, three thousand one hundred dollars in credit donations and citizens has already been received. And it's sitting in a city account for this project. Um, so they are requesting additional five thousand fifty dollars to complete funding for the project, obviously. Uh, they don't need all that money, then. It would be, you know, the city. Our current balance in the T R T account is thirty four thousand nine hundred forty dollars. And the camera mirror is here on behalf of the uh Parks Committee, it's also been about this project that's been in part. And um we wrote request, the T R T request, which is including council packet. Would you be answering any questions that I can?
Okay, thanks uh for your motion.
I move that we approve up to five thousand fifty dollars in T R T funds for construction of the Banner Park kiosk sign.
Your second.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Hollitt, discussion or questions of?
I would love to hear from Linda.
Linda, you wanna pitch?
Um, and my fellow.
We've met that guy.
Question, this person of us. Um, I think it's fairly straightforward. We plan to build an information kiosk. That follows the signage away from it. Um, it's adopted by the council in two thousand fourteen. And the sign will be located um from uh to Cedar Street. Uh next to the banner park. And so it can be visible from traffic or pedestrians coming either way, this west. And all that kiosk, as prescribed in the signage, we find it. Will be maps of the local area and then a larger to help. Oh, that's the out that of the broader context of where we are here in Oak Ridge. And. The um other side, there's gonna be a two sided sign will have um. National cultural history information to give further context for where you are. And of course, it's oriented toward visitors um. Because there is no other sign like that, we were in Oak Ridge and people in our neighborhood. Want to know the things on. The cost may seem high, but we did raise money and. And then the Bay County Economic Development also put in two thousand dollars for this sign. And their interest is be sure that we was businesses. Or how we get to businesses, what services are here in our area, so that it promotes economic development. In terms of the details of the sign, I have um. Had conversations with Chancellor Department, unfortunately, vacation, I believe, this week. Unable to be here, but we volunteered to be our construction manager, has background in that. And would do quite well to procure things for us at a lower cost and for a whole project official. We used to mention several folks uh who he can contact for, perhaps, and volunteer were. Manufacturing the um the black metal things that you see on the other park signs that are lower cost, those kinds of things. So we are trying to trim our budget and do as well as we can.
Excellent.
Has something like this been considered to do on the highway, knowing the day since there is a lot more traffic? Thinking about people that come through and I always hear a lot of people saying, oh, I've been through Oak Ridge, I didn't know there was an uptown. I didn't know there was more than the highway. So just curious of those.
Well, one of the advantages of the signage here is it's on city owned property. And along Highway fifty eight, right in the border where traffic goes by, not very much publicly owned property. You would have to work with the private property owner and that's all that plus you have O dot. So to consider and then putting something up. We do have the billboard next to the uh. On the going eastbound and it says the story of town loop. So it it was quite a bit of work to get that billboard that offered the. I can sit through, but overall organization and that helps a little bit, but yes, I agree with you, it's very challenging to.
And I'm not suggesting this one in particular, not that I'm at Warren Secretary one day.
Yeah, uh there are signs in the signage and wayfinding plan that are supposed to be installed along Highway fifty eight. Just comes down to funding that. And uh one of the things they identified was signage clutter. So you have this sign and that sign, they're all different types of sizes and colors, and she unified that so that. Uh somebody testing, people say, oh, it's that sign, it it has something for me. Because you recognize the shape of the border or something.
Thank you, Linda.
Any other questions? Comments, discussion?
Um, I do, I wanted to clarify, um. I think it was something that Jane mentioned that made me think that it's intended to have. The money given to you upfront. Or. Sorry, just to put, I just wanna clarify, will you be able to have this? Uh something that you guys pay for and bring us a receipt to be reimbursed as for the normal process for TRT funds?
Well, because we're working on public property, what we did before was simply um. Find the item we need to buy, like in this case, it's going to be six by sixes and uh processing and plywood. Some bolts, metal fittings, you know, pricing, you get an invoice. On site, Colleen, and say us corner bucks for these supplies and then she. And hold in the to the supplier and paper over the phone or some other way. And just also like can we carry the travel, give this invoice and bring the invoice to home and she hands them to you. The existing city if not. So Colleen, if you wanna say anything else, how you prefer.
During the betterment park itself, so they didn't have, you know.
I did wanna mention the clarification. I'm not seeing anything on the existing TRT rules because we can't pay that money in the dance or RTMB.
Yeah, it's reimbursing, but I.
And for the. Block grant. It is reimbursing, but. Here are two points generally, I'm I'm not seeing.
But it also sounds like there's verification of the purchase before it's being dispersed, so it creates that. Check.
Okay.
Balance.
Councillor Kenyon, do you have a preference how it's handled? I'm not fully comfortable in receiving a.
Well, I prefer that what you're describing would would be what happens versus the city just handing them a check for that dollar amount. And then hoping and then we would have no verification. Of receipts of what was spent and what have you. So what you're describing sounds reasonable to me and and James is right, it's not in the rules, I don't see it. I I think that in past practice, it's been what's been required. You know, whether or not a rule actually existed or not, but I'm okay with what you've just described.
Any other questions before we go to a vote? Alright, uh the motion was to approve up to five thousand fifty dollars. In TRT funds for construction of the Banner Park kiosk sign. Colleen, would you call the vote button?
Councillor Holland?
Aye.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Mayor Clinton?
Aye. Alright, motion passes unanimously. Alright, moving on to ten point three, which is. Raising the TRT block grant program maximum to one thousand dollars and include murals. Ben.
Mayor. Speaking of the TRT funds, part of that uh funding is for the TRT block grant program. Which is the reimbursement program where uh businesses, we have sound as a private PA. They are unifying the business by landscaping, painting on the model. Uh and yet up to five hundred hours um in matching bugs reimbursed for that project. Um that's been higher dollars for years um. I think I've never received three applications in my fifteen month tenure. And five hundred dollars just doesn't go very far these days, but it receives, I'm saying this for simple things, like three thousand plus. So I'm requesting to change the TRT block grant rules. To be uh moved up to a thousand dollars, again, matching buttons still required. And our TM, the TRT committee uh reviewed this and unanimously voted to take the same recommendation to council. Uh additionally, I would like to uh ask that murals be included as eligible verification project. Uh with the caveat that any mural designs must be pre-approved by a city council. That way.
Yeah.
Something totally inappropriate to not. Funded. And I forgot to mention that to the TRT, our TMB committee, so. They unanimously voted to approve, putting up to a thousand, they did not address the euros issue. Just bringing that directly onto myself.
Okay, so your motion.
I move that we raise the TRT block grant program maximum. To one thousand dollars in matching funds and to include murals as an eligible project if the designs. Are pre-approved by city council.
I'll second.
Motion made by councillor Kenyon, second by councillor Hooker. Discussion? Well, I have a couple of things, this kind of bothered me a little bit um. So. When council looks at it, it becomes a subjective determination of the appropriateness of the artwork. Um again. Like it's, I would, and to me, it's almost micromanagement by the city council. I would prefer to have the defer to the CA. To determine if it's, make sure it's not overtly offensive. However, if you get to the point where you're directing artists, that is not appropriate. It becomes infringement on their freedom of expression. In addition, you're paying for this, but it's not being painted on city property. So I think, again, it's not appropriate to mandate what kind of picture has to go up on the side of their wall. If it's, unless it's offensive. So those are my thoughts and I don't know, please.
I actually agree with you quite hard again. Um I think that that the the part about. You know, it going through someone such as the CA is not offensive so that we don't end up with. Who knows what up on the side of a building. Um I don't know, are there any ordinances that um cover murals and you know, what's. Appropriate and not appropriate?
There's, I mean, we have signage uh. But for this.
Yeah. Signage just covers the size of a maximum size of a sign and that kind of thing, but I don't, I don't know that we have anything specifically to art for murals on the side of.
Yeah. I would agree that if it's a private business, it should be after them what they wanna put on it, as long as it's not offensive.
Please.
I agree and disagree. I agree with that um we. Don't necessarily have control over someone's artwork, however, they're asking us to pay for it. That's why I think the difference is, sorry, I do agree with James when they're asking for us to pay for. And I think we should have a little bit of say so, or I'll bring you up a couple of examples. I do think citizens would be upset if you paid for a poly mural on the side of the campus. Greenhouse, I think there would be upset community if the city paid.
Any discussion on the Zoom from councillors on this issue? No? Okay, I guess we'll go to a vote.
Well, I made the motion, so I would like to um. How do you do that?
You can rescind it and restate it if you'd like.
I'd like to rescind my motion and restate it. So I move that we raise the TRT block grant program. Maximum to one thousand dollars in matching funds and to include murals as an eligible project. If the designs are pre-approved. By our city administrator.
Okay, so your second.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Okay, the motion was made by councillor Kenyon, second by councillor Hollitt. Um any discussion on this new motion?
It's like a good fair justice, because I just read the general TRT rules, which would apply to the TRT block grant. Think about it. Yeah, yeah, uh specific advertisement for a business.
Okay.
So those rules still apply, so in your instance, I think there are one of the. For no shot. A public.
That's a, yeah.
Well, if it didn't have their business name on it.
Yeah.
So distinct dwellings, the new mural that went up, we would not be able to pay for that, is what you're saying right here.
Not to mention the.
It just went up on the side of, it used to be yellow, but it's gray now.
Where the pet store is. They share that building and um if you're going to.
Oh, no, I know where it is, but I haven't seen it. This was a mural.
It's, it's distinct dwellings, it looks really nice.
It's a beautiful um scene of mountains and river with their name above it.
I'm okay as long as somebody in the city is having some general.
Yeah. Sounds good to me. Alright, anything else on the Zoom?
I just know that you would have a lot of people in that upset with us. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. Alright, so the motion was to raise the TRT block grant. Program maximum to one thousand dollars in matching funds and to include murals as an eligible project. If the designs are pre-approved by the city administrator. Good, that's okay.
Um yes, however, I was thinking I'd like to amend it just a little bit, was, I'm sorry. Pre-approved by our city administrator for offensiveness. You think that it should, because I mean, what if he, what if whoever the CA is doesn't like.
Sounds good to me.
So it has to be for a good service.
It's always gonna be a little subjectivity in there anyway, but any case, eh, okay with that? Yeah.
I want murals to happen sometimes.
Yes.
Alright, Colleen, you talk for the vote, please.
Councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Mayor Clinton?
Nice.
Councillor Holland?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes um on to ten point four, that's city rummage sale at the WAC.
Mayor, uh as we have. Remodelled various city buildings, including the one we're seeing right now. We have accumulated. Unshoved surplus items, office furniture, electronics, both CR. And things. That um are low value items, yeah, they're just taking up space. A lot of stuff is been put in the wax, it's. Buildings, um I would like to get rid of a lot of that stuff. With the rummage sale would be great, would go to that. Our policy for. Purposing would would allow that as long as the uh values, the items are five hundred dollars or less. So I'd like to to have it when we sell shortening, you know, the late summer or early fall. At the WAC, potentially including side gym, not the lightest, the second gym. Uh in addition. We'd like to invite community members to set up their tables. Or whatever, we didn't charge a small fee for that. To make additional money, but also to just make a bigger deal to attract more customers. I start calling. Already offered to help organize the center. We want to help do it, but that's a general idea. Council, council permission to start organizing.
Okay, so your motion.
I move to allow the CA to plan a rummage sale at the WAC in order to sell low value. Surplus items.
Your second? Well, your picture's up, councillor Hooker, so it's, you got the the honors. Alright, motion made by councillor Kenyon, second by councillor Hooker. Uh discussion, questions of staff?
Is the WAC gym insured?
It is insured at this time. Although we have inspection on Friday, so. Insurance inspection.
Oh.
But the assessment. The the inspection they're gonna be doing is for fire safety stuff, extinguishers, alarms, and stuff, and we just had an inspection. And pretty surely passed thirteen by separate organizations, so. Initial indications are good, then we will.
Is the whole building then potentially insured or just the gym?
The whole building is insured while it's under construction. We also have general liability policy. Paying a lot for um. It's temporary policy, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, question?
I just wanted to say that James and I were collaborating on this and um that was the first question I'm asking. If the building would be able to have people in it to the gym portion, and that is our plan is to. Really not have people roaming about the entire building. It would be really focused on the gym, using that and charging a small fee. I think it'd be a really fun thing, maybe even use a little bit of parking lot. Do pop ups or whatever. Also, the WAC committee, um I asked them if they would be on board, and they would all like to help too. The funding committee wants to help, but we would need help dragging furniture pieces out, at least in the hallways, because there is a lot.
You counters on the Zoom, have a question? No? Okay, one James or two actually, um the proceeds from the sale will go to the general fund? Okay? And. Was there a popcorn machine can be stolen?
We have, that's on this thing.
Okay, just.
But if you find it, should be safer or safer?
It belongs to somebody. Uh so save it.
You save it.
Yeah, okay, um so our questions will go to a vote, Colleen, please.
Uh councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Councillor Holland?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Clinton?
Aye.
Councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes unanimously. Um next is ten point five, that's the We Are Sharp cooling station proposal, James.
Right, so uh I was approached by uh Rain, Jane, Department Board.
In Markway, yeah.
Uh founder of We Are Sharp, volunteer based jury organization, primarily focused on heating and now. Great partnership with the Memphis Church. They are requesting the city's permission to operate a cooling station, city property. For up to four hours a day when temperatures are above eighty-five degrees, up to six hours a day, it's above ninety-five degrees. Uh we stay up to, because that's gonna depend on volunteer availability. Uh because this will be all volunteer run, no city staff will be involved. I understand we are sharp, came up with this idea, but it isn't a city of Salem's cooling station. Basically, there's a whole of it attached to the building, it's basically the frame of a pop-up tent. They run the sprinkler, attach to the top, turn it upside down, indoor mistirks, so water comes down. On boats. Um I want to stress this is not a shower, it's not intended uh for the exclusive use of the greenhouse. It's intended for any open citizen who's cool off during high temperatures. Uh public works supervisor Robert Christman is supportive of this idea. This, say if people work with We Are Sharp to find the best location. Currently, the locations to be looking at. Parking lot of the WAC because there's a drainage section at the drain right there. Or one of our city parks, besides green waters, the reason we're excluding green waters is sometimes it's rented for large events. And predict what days. There will be an event versus when it will be hot, so we think about. The other parts, but again, Robert Christman will. Work with We Are Sharp to determine which. Best place, so what is this gonna cost the city? Estimated less than a hundred dollars worth of water. For the summer, based on our. Hurt pricing for a lot of people, so not a lot, not a big footprint here, again. We are sharp, it showed me that uh. They will run it, wind it up, put it up, take it down, etc. Don't do that. Hold the hose.
Thank you, um, so your motion?
I'll make a motion so we can have a discussion. I move we to allow We Are Sharp to build and operate a cooling station on city property when temperatures are above eighty-five degrees. Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Hooker, second by Counselor Coker. Uh, discussion, uh, Counselor Hooker, did you wanna kick it off?
You betcha. Just a quick question, um, since we got the packet, I've been looking all over town, I don't feel comfortable of it being in a park that the city owns, um. I understand we do need something like this, however, what about possibly working? There's the place right there that's fenced, I guess that's what I was thinking, on the corner of Rosen First, and I know that that's part of the, um, what is it, part of the elementary school or something? But there's one right there, um, you know, it's. Pardon?
The tennis court.
No, it's not the tennis court, it's on the other side by the old uh Resource Center. There's the element, there's the elementary school, and then there's the big, there's a field that is fenced where the firefighters, I believe, pitch their tents.
Some of. It's a baseball field.
Oh, the one by the elementary school is?
Yeah, it's a baseball field.
Okay, I thought the ball field was on the other side on Crest View.
Yeah, there's multiple baseball fields, I, my kids are in T-ball and softball and stuff, so when there's events, they use all of them.
Okay.
Particular is used quite a bit in the summer.
It is, okay. Well, just, just a, I guess, I guess my concern is, I just feel like there, there might be a better place for it than the parks. But that's my comment.
I have some comments too. Um, as a parent, um, my kids play in the parks, and there are, I know, I realize this is not only for transient, but um I listen to a lot of parents um here, but as a parent myself, when my kids go to the park, they are instructed to leave the parks when there are particular transients to come into the parks, so um I wholeheartedly believe that we would have a lot of upset parents and family members if we held something like this at the parks, also, a lot of our parks, there's event goers, and I think that's the purpose of our parks. Um, so I would not also be in support of using any of the parks um for those, um. I might be supportive of the WAC, but um my next question is on the temperatures, so eighty-five degrees, um. What's your projection on how many days that you would be setting that up? Eighty-five degrees, how many?
Eighty-five to ninety, um. How many days?
Yeah. Yeah, well, if you did show a brief monthly. Well, when we did the warming center, we forecasted it out, and we looked at how many days were below uh thirty-two degrees, I think it was, so I'm asking the same question, but on the opposite end of this spectrum.
I just know, working at the WAC every year, that just changes all the time, um. But I can't do that, and you're very good for you.
I, I, for the next ten days, there are four days that are eighty-five, eighty-five or above. So let me correct myself, it's above eighty-five, and then currently, there are two days that are predicted to be above eighty-five.
Basically, they appear to be approximately three days a week, due to the hot stage with the summer. Um, this is a program that so many persons are running, and it seems to be working very well, might as well be for the last two.
Where do they do them in other cities, where are they setting them?
Unfortunately, they're running them at their big shop. Which we don't have, um.
Has the churches, have you reached out to like the Baptist church or any of those places to hold it there first?
I know they're running to their events for children, and then they could have limited to their thinking of, um. As a grandmother and a mom, I probably would not predict, I didn't even ask for grandmother's part, um, that would be my first choice. And the last part, DeMott, was kind of what I was thinking.
But there is a playground there, it's an estate park we have also for kids.
The area to WAC you're talking about, that is raining, is like a gym, kind of like.
Like the raceway?
Yeah, um, I was also doing another idea, there's gonna be, we need garden. Those things.
That's my bad idea.
Any other questions? Now, I had a couple, um, James, would you anticipate the liability being covered by the city or the nonprofit?
Uh, the city.
And then the, the concept of operation, so it operates for four hours for a day? And then, is it, you completely collapse everything, go home, or does it stay erected and the hose stays there?
Yeah, it's an E T F, eating down. And the other programs just have volunteers who do that. And then, um, volunteers who check on it throughout the day, they have rules, there's, there's stationary, um, and contact numbers as well.
And so we would have the ability to secure the water at night?
Yeah, we have lots.
Yeah. Counselor Kenya?
Um, you just said something that sparked my uh ears, you said volunteers would check on it throughout the day, so it wouldn't be manned for the entire time it's open?
Uh, you can't do that, that would be a lot of man hours, if they're expecting someone to be there all day long, um. The way the other programs running is they have somebody who checks in every one to two hour meeting for running a day. Uh. I, I was just worried about vandalism. Like, or. I mean, uh, obviously, it's your property, right, not the city's property? It is on property. And it's equally very low cost, simple, simple structure, it's literally just the frame to a pop-up tent. Um, with the top, we're using the top of it. Total cost to give the entire thing less than.
Counselor Hooker, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, one quick. One quick thing, didn't know if I was off mute, mute, um, that seems if the city's the liability falls at the city, that kind of concerns me in itself, um. I'm not sure how to prevent that, but that definitely is a big concern I have been.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
I just have one more thing, um. I really appreciate your heart and all the things you try to do for the unhoused here, but I just wanna say ahead, it's gonna be a no vote for me because of the community there has reached out so much over the last years about the unhoused in that area, and I think bringing them back to the WAC um, would just be really difficult, I can say, I know one of them in particular sat in the fire department parking lot and screamed for twelve hours. And um I know this would be one of them, and I just hate to do that to that neighborhood, and um there's, I think there's lots of shaded areas, and I really think that community deserves to have a nice peaceful area. I was knowing the winter time that there were parked cars staying there for twenty-four to forty-eight hours at a time, and it just was such a trouble for the neighborhood and the people living in that community, and out of respect for the residents living there, I just don't feel like this is worthless.
Any other discussion? Will we go to a vote, Counselor Kenya?
I, I wonder if, um. How, how is the motion worded, is it, who is it gonna be up to as to where it's located?
Doesn't say it all, it's up to the, is he up to staff?
We're updated to whatever is suggested. I really like James's idea, it's a community garden, and I don't, I consider it a few, um. Way less intrusive to uh neighborhoods and um parkgoers.
Is that right here?
Um, I have to show you, it's, it's near Sam and Free Park. Yeah.
Near the harbor inn.
Okay. Kind of behind it, uh, if you walk down that levee trail next to the river, there's a community garden back in there. Yeah. I definitely supported if it was there, but I'm wary about. I'm wary about vandalism for one of them.
Would you like to amend Counselor Hooker's motion to state a location? Or locations?
Yes, I'd like to have a friendly amendment to locate this in the community garden.
I hear a second.
Second.
All right.
Some new discussion question, how would that affect the neighborhood in that area?
It really doesn't border any homes.
My backyard.
I mean, um.
And it's right next to Sam and Free Park.
I meant, um. Homes are facing it, like, I'm assuming you have a bench backyard? No?
No, that road back there, a lot of them are open.
Hmm. Are you gonna bring?
And the park is also right there.
Uh, well, the park doesn't, you, you cannot see the park from the community garden and vice versa.
I know.
So I really don't think it would affect children in the park.
Just the ones on the levee.
Children on the levee.
Tons of, tons of kids on that levee, go by every morning.
Alone?
Sometimes.
Yes, I think the consensus, though, is being a parent, if I know, and I'm not trying to put a stigma out there, but I do work with some of them, and they're just unpredictable. And parents probably aren't going to want to put their kids in close proximity to somebody that they're concerned about, so that's just.
May I?
It's gonna happen anywhere we go.
Counselor Hooker, do you have another question?
I just wanted to ask a quick question, um, do I need to accept that friendly amendment since I made the original motion?
There, there's no such thing as a friendly amendment, it's an amendment, and we'll vote on the amendment, which you can vote against if you're.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, so Colleen, or the amendment is to append the original motion to include a location of the community garden. That worked for you, Counselor Kenya? Yeah. So, in this case, the motion to be voting on for the amendment would be to move to allow We Are Sharp to build and operate a cooling station on a city property, on city property when temperatures above eighty-five degrees at the community garden. Okay, Colleen, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Cottin?
No.
Counselor Hooker?
Nay.
Counselor Penny?
Aye.
Counselor Cooper?
Nay.
Counselor Holler?
Nay.
All right, the amendment fails, which means now we're back to the original motion, and that motion was to allow We Are Sharp to build and operate a cooling station on city property when temperatures are above eighty-five degrees. Colleen, do you call for a vote on that, please?
Counselor Cooper?
Was that Counselor Coker?
Coker, sorry, yes.
Uh, nay.
Counselor Penny?
Aye.
Mayor Cottin?
No.
Counselor Hooker?
Nay.
Counselor Holland?
Nay.
All right, motion fails, um. Moving on to ten point six. Uh. Revised City Council Rules of Procedure, Counselor Kenyon, do you wanna make a motion right off the bat?
I move that we postpone this discussion until after we've received our um. Letter from an attorney regarding that. I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, second by Counselor Hooker. Any discussion on this at all? Okay, uh, the motion was uh to postpone item ten point six until the city receives uh uh, legal advice from the city attorney. Colleen, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Mayor Cottin?
Aye.
Counselor Penny?
Aye.
Counselor Cooper?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, uh. And ten point seven, housing needs analysis, H and A, final report, James?
All right, uh, this is basically uh information only at this point, uh, but since it's a large document, the measure council had that in front of me. Essentially important without the current solution, so if some works be done, um, to find a connection. It's information on when we have this.
Okay, um. Any questions of staff on this, ten point seven? Okay, uh, moving on to item ten point eight, which is uh, letter of support for U S Forest Service dispersed campsite closures order to prevent RV dumping.
Right, uh, this, Counselor Hollis, uh, was talking about, uh, earlier in reference to the backburners group, of the law, basically, we're thinking of some of these, um, abandoned camp sites, trailers, et cetera. Forest Service has, uh, proposed a closing order for a lot of sites in and around Oak Ridge where um, campus has dumped trash, dumped trailers, et cetera, um, the mass of these locations are. There's support. On, to on the Forest Service, and we drafted letter of support. Uh, designed by the mayor himself, also mentions, uh, support from our police chief. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. One important station to note is that these sites should still remain open to the public, but for days, it's only strictly forbidden to camp there.
Your motion?
I move to allow the mayor and C A to sign the draft letter of support for the proposed U S Forest Service dispersed campsite closures order.
I hear a second.
Second.
All right, motion made by Counselor Hooker and second by Counselor Holler, discussion, questions of staff on this one?
I think we all need to reach out to public that we know and ask them as well to, um, write personal individual letters on this one.
Into the sites that you provided us, are they available to the public at all online, I s- I guess is where they would be available?
Yeah, they will. A little bit hard to find.
Same, break down the end here is one, right?
Yeah.
I took the one when you come into town, I'm right, it's not one.
Yep, there's multiple slots on.
The other side of a. They're all, they're all good. they're all, they're all good picks.
Counselor Kenyon?
I am, I am all in favor of writing a support letter, but what I'm confused about is that the Forest Service is even able to do something like this because when I was on a cleanup crew one time for that particular site at Fish柳 Tree and East First, there was a Forest Service worker there who told us that they can't, they can't make people leave areas according to federal law or something like that.
Maybe this is the mechanism that lets them do it before its orders.
Maybe it's because there doesn't need any of the day use only area.
Oh.
I think that is what Jay told me.
Okay.
Any questions online from counselors? Okay. Um, the motion is to allow the mayor and CA to sign the draft letter of support for the proposed US Forest Service dispersed campsite closure order. Colleen, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Holler?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Cooper?
Aye.
Mary Cottin?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Ten point seven was the, that was the housing needs analysis that was just made available to us.
No discussion.
Okay. And James, is that H and A available to the public, the, the new one? Yeah?
Yeah, it says, uh, staff, the two staff members who will do that probably automatically.
So it's not, it could be made available, it's just waiting on people to do it. Okay, great. All right. On to item eleven, which is business from the city administrator, eleven point one, OIP office eight rental to Stellar J Construction. James?
The mayor, all right, so Stellar Day Construction is, uh, primary contractor on project to fix the bridges on San and Free and over at the DA and also this Salt Creek Bridge is gonna start in late August. Rocked it in here. They wanted to rent the small office number eight in the OIP office building and also a small section like to, by, in, which is in the firewood. OIP lot three seven. Last time, this office was back in two thousand nineteen and the rate at that time was thirteen dollars a month. So like, five hundred. Placement also, we did the small section for storage and stuff. And to be honest with you, that's about the maximum we willing to go for. Normally, uh, these projects, they will take a, a trailer utility term, whatever, or a job site next to their office. He would prefer a brick and mortar office. So. They must have decided.
Okay, now do I hear a motion?
I move to allow the CA to rent OIP office number eight and a small section of OIP lot thirty-seven to stellar construction for five hundred per month.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Hooker. Is there any discussion on this or questions of James? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, on the lot thirty-seven, I'm assuming that the people that are currently working there are okay with that during this? Is it like some of the space?
It's not.
Space that.
Not space that they use.
Okay.
So it is the community fire program lot?
It's just, it's a really tiny section that has its own fence entrance that hasn't been used.
So it's not covered by the lease that we currently have within them?
Correct.
Okay. And you know how long the project is supposed to take?
Roughly a year. Uh, I think it's, I think they gave a little bit of wiggling here, so it's like fifteen months, two fifteen.
As for seismic upgrade, did that ever change?
Yeah, like they're raising the one bridge and by like one inch.
Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I was wondering if you know if they're gonna make that bridge capable of ninety-one thousand.
Just in case then.
What are you moving down the road?
All right, any other questions or discussion? Colleen? Now, let me actually restate this. Uh, the motion was to allow the CA to rent OIP office number eight and a small section of OIP lot thirty-seven to Stellar J Construction for five hundred dollars per month. Colleen?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Mary Cottin?
Aye.
Counselor Holler? Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Cooper?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to eleven point two, response to questions regarding volunteer firefighter slash EMS stipends. So, uh, James, do you want to introduce this or just, uh, go into it?
A general introduction, uh, mayor asked questions about the decisions to raise the stipends. Answered those questions in writing. Up to council.
Sure.
Read those answers aloud or just take.
Okay, so I can, the, the motion's optional, obviously, and I would consider any motion by the city council to set volunteer stipend pay inappropriate and possibly in conflict with the city charter uh, and council rules procedure by interfering with the day-to-day operations of the city staff. But I don't think that setting stipend pay is a job for the city council. So I think my questions were, that, what I was driving at is we're misconstrued and that'll come up later, but first I'll ask council if they have any questions or concerns or discussion on this after reading through.
I would like James to read the answers because it's public transparency, I mean, public interest.
I agree that.
You okay with that, Counselor Hooker, Counselor Cooper?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine.
James, I guess it's over to you.
All right, uh, the last council meeting, uh, the last six, uh, you're asking questions regarding the recent increases to the fire departments on your stipends. Specifically, there being where the fire department volume just like in the increases specifically driver firefighter EMR volunteers, which need the twenty percent increase for one hundred dollars, one hundred and twenty dollars per twenty-four hour shift. Basically, MTA, two fifty percent increase to one hundred dollars, fifty dollars per twenty-four hour shift. MTA ones, electronics, being ten percent based on one hundred and eighty dollars per twenty-four hour shift. Um, and specific questions were asked, when was the decision made? My answers from the, I wrote them with input from Chief Scott Hollis, I believe, who's online. So the answer, when the decision was made is, uh, Chief Hollis made the decision to increase the stipends and create three separate categories based on certification levels. Where it's, you have higher certifications, higher excitement, approximately six months ago. The financial impact itself took place on March first of twenty-three. Process and rationale were used to write the decision generally for two rationales, kind of volunteer excitement program increases. Want to encourage more volunteers to join, which in turn will hopefully save part of money by being able to throw as many shifts as possible with volunteers rather than having to pay on full-time employees, overtime, taking, yeah. The second is to increase the professionalism of the department by, by the consensus, not only join, but to increase their certification levels. Hence, we cite and pay for more higher certification levels. So, I'm going to be sort of the partner. And then uh, tax, taxes right now the lowest loaded overtime wage for full-time firefighter paramedic is sixty dollars and five cents per hour, which is one thousand four eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents per twenty-four hour shift. Contrast to highest a volunteer, bringing a hundred and fifty dollars per hour stipend shift. Uh, that is seven dollars and fifty cents. So, in this item that this would save in the city, one thousand three hundred nine dollars and twenty cents per shift. In hypothetically, just ten shifts, you're recovered, it would save, it's in thirty, thirty thousand dollars. Like thirteen thousand and twenty dollars. Those day volunteer side of break is. That's inaccurate, the lowest daily side of rate is hundred and twenty dollars, twenty-four hour shift, so, so. But it is not above the money, the volunteer side of programs started approximately just fourteen, or former chief. All day, right? We surveyed existing volunteer programs throughout the state and believe that a second program could encourage more people volunteer. One hundred dollars per twenty-four hour, just citing, you said at that time, despite inflation's ever been raised from now. One hundred dollars for twenty-four hours, weighted to four dollars and sixteen cents per hour. So correct myself again, a hundred and twenty dollars per hour shift is five dollars. Um, so let's face it, and now the volunteers can wait, make way more money without putting their lives on the line by doing just about. The reason we decided to increase the site amount was right to all incentives, you can join in person, get additional training, increase certifications, and this the cover some of your costs, which is food, gas, childcare, equipment, et cetera. Twenty-four shift is, it takes commitment, dedication, sacrifice, we weren't spending that time, you know, time waiting, handling your own bed, real job. The best enjoyed volunteers, we got jobs elsewhere. So the volunteers should be applauded and thanked for the work they do and the lives saved, not scrutinizing in this. The new tier excitement system is intended to incentivize people to become full EMT ice level, so they can do even more good and save even more lives, saving significantly more money by doing certain things. Based tremendous amount of time, not even a few, a license, EMT, paramedic. This person achieved these higher levels, personally, all these level courses. They're not done because you maintain these certifications and price. You're also increasing the number of community activities. Our department should be more of an emergency response with our volunteers not being or taking any cited amounts. They're unable to participate in firefighting activity, responding medical, medical home, or covering whole membership, so. For those folks, our business is important, valuable is those who succeed sites, because they do the non- glamourous essential work prior to running, fire departments and spokesmen there, too. It also be noted there has been silver made, it's an annual cap on maximum amount of stipend money volunteers can receive, this happens twenty percent of the lowest, a full-time firefighter department. They're also limited by budgets for stipends, which is previously mentioned, already removed by the budget committee and city council. Especially if what people were making decisions, uh, all at night were the only people involved in this decision. Words or, where are the requirements, you see, council, etc., approve the volunteer stipend amounts. So I do agree with the mayor. Necessary. However, council does of course approve the fire department budget, including line item four bonus of stipends, which the council and budget committee have already approved. Our understanding was an error, sincerely apologize, and I take full responsibility for your oversight. Of course, to next question, did any city employees or elected officials involve in making a decision whether we end university financial position? No elected officials were involved. The Paul's wife, not so much, you know, as well as, not whoever was a person are both certified on TE's, eligible to receive one hundred and fifty dollars for twenty-four hour shift stipend. Just like anyone else with their certification levels, I mean, that's a village. While it's true that they gain financially for six hours, twenty-five cents an hour, the wage, it's also important to note that the fire department is also being financially through the dedicated service, which is saving part of a thousand dollars to make sense rain, for which I'm very grateful, to be frank, I'm more citizens, leading more city councils would be willing to be done, volunteer firefighters. And especially with how the results from the city and she can object. Yes, more volunteer stipend ships are being built by existing volunteers, it's an increase in signing amounts. I have two new, basically MTS, and one immediate MTS, just a program by expectations that will take time to rebuild our program after having lost so many volunteers, the past years due to some requirements, moving out of state, so. We are continuing to develop additional improvement, says the on-site program. Small part of the department's improvement and retention plan. Especially with regard to volunteer affiliation, how many applications that have seen from the past twelve months? It's her, present fourteen. This question, how many of the applicants were interviewed? Get approximately four. This question of those interviews, how many was selected, joined the department? No eligible applicants were turned away or denied, you know? However, there were, you have things who just not followed through, under the grant and training process, or did not pass a background check. They were failed with the testing process. We currently have eleven new volunteers, we need for the next firefighter one academy class. Asking to receive two more volunteer, part-time applicants. Very excited, hopeful about future of the program and additional applications are always welcome. But they, the fire department's website to apply to. And then, I know the financial impacts, site and radius. Fifty, twenty, fifty, eighty dollars can run certifications, which the rates work out to eighty-three cents per hour rates for the bottom level, George's eight cent rate, for the middle level, we are a really weak cent per hour rate.
Thanks, James. So again, uh, I, I don't agree with making a motion to, for city council to, uh, mandate certain stipend rates, but, and I appreciate the work of the staff and, and putting together this response. You know, the, the questions were not, not imposed to characterize volunteers as money hungry leeches uh, or expose them to increased scrutiny. I, I more than anyone knows that a volunteer is, uh, a great benefit to the city as opposed to having to fill that vacancy with a, uh, overtime paid, full-time person or a part-timer. So I know that the value they bring to the, uh, to the game, and I fully appreciate all the volunteers as, including volunteer Hollis, as well as the steadfast commitment that Chief Hollis provides. My career is more focused on the process used to arrive at the increase and the possible conflicts of interest which may have occurred. Particularly if you consider Oregon administrative rule one nine nine zero zero eight zero 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 eight. So, that administrative rule gives examples of supervisor conflicts which closely parallel our situation. So this is, in my mind, city, in, in the city's best interest to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest by city staff, which is not declared and mitigated. So hypothetically, had I been in Chief Hollis's shoes, I probably would have declared the conflict in writing to the CA and appointed one of my very experienced uh, full-time firefighters to carry this issue forward with the CA and make that decision, as opposed to having Chief Hollis put himself at risk of a complaint By him making a decision which. Did or could result in his personal income being increased by thousands of dollars each year. So I I come from a federal background where ethics is absolutely just honed in every single. Every single year, every single month, and so I take a very conservative approach, I will agree with you. Um, and ethics, uh, are not black and white. So, uh, I would suggest we use this as a, as a learning experience. And perhaps consider other ways to do business like that when it comes forward, so. Again, uh, with that, I'll open it to council, I don't believe we're going to have a motion, but if there is one, I'll open it to council for discussion, council hall.
I would have said this, but I didn't interrupt you, I am abstaining from this conversation for obvious reasons.
Understand. Any other discussion from Zoom counselors? Okay, uh, hearing no motions, we.
Well, I wanted to just mention that. It. Well, number one, I'd like to know what that O A R number was that you read.
You can have that.
Thank you. And then, um. Secondly, it's my understanding from painting that I've had, and I think it got mentioned in here somewhere. As far as, um, ethics, though, if. It, oh, here it is, just like anyone else with their certification level, so. If. If the wage increases isn't specific to. The one relative. But it's, but it's for all people with those that are certified in that way. But E M T or E M R.
Understand.
Um. Then, then it's not a conflict, that's what my understanding is.
Well, I just look at it from a perspective where if I was a citizen sitting in the seats and I saw this event, I'd look at it and say, well. The fire chief and the C A got together, they made a decision together, which ended up in the fire chief's family taking home. Several thousand more dollars each year, does that sound something that you would want the citizens to think? And what, and what's, and what is the detriment you're accusing yourself, that's my point, is. Pollitt, that's a great idea, and if that's the case, let one of his various, maybe his volunteer coordinator bring it forward with James. And he can put his conflict intervention righty, he's completely covered, his issue gets addressed, and if, and and you could make it happen, so I just try to be as. Open and clean and above board as I possibly can, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any more soon, no, okay, moving on. It's like eleven point three update on surplus property sales, James.
Um. Thought we might be a little further along. Some of the sales in the yard, but we're still moving forward, some in progress.
We've got two in hand, so.
Yeah.
And that is, uh, took another offer on last twenty one again.
Good. And the, uh. The only current venture we had is the. All of the first building is, uh. It happened by the end of the month. So, yeah, things are still in progress.
Okay. Any question to James on that property sales? Okay, one point four is. Saint Vincent DePaul, our H R B program, I know it's a flying there, James, anything to add to this?
Just that, uh, the the plan is, is, so Lays County is technically going to be the the new. Requester for the grants, the grant money, but they're going to be using Oak Ridge and Westford, um. As kind of the focus, uh, for this go around. Uh, the limits have been, uh, the annual income limits have been raised a little bit. And so. Folks are welcome to apply for the program. Anytime they wish, I'll make it for it, just.
Great. Uh, nothing for twelve, thirteen, or fourteen, uh, down to fifteen, fifteen point one, the finance report. Colleen, do you have anything to start off with, or do you want to just take it to the council? Um. Any questions of, uh, Colleen on the finance report, the. Check register, the public safety fee report, or the T R P R T and P report?
I I did want to get some clarification, council, one issue.
Sure.
Um. Council called back in June, uh, council made a motion to have the finance report out. One week in advance, but under the new council rules and procedure. I I didn't have to have the. Agenda out. Six days in advance, but ultimately. So. There's a conflict of one day, and I don't know. If, uh, council wants to stick with the one week in advance on my news report, because that would be, you know, Monday, Thursday, the finance report will be on Friday. But we can then, uh.
I would prefer to have, yeah.
I'm okay with them being separate, I don't know. Why that would matter, I mean, you could, if we got these. There's always a chance that the agenda. Including all the. Information that comes with it, not just the agenda. But the packet itself. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not done talking, can I, can we wait until we open it up for you? What I was trying to say was, it's quite often that we're not getting our packet until Monday. I don't want to wait for the financial information until Monday, because in addition to the packet. This fifteen or twenty page document they're getting is too much. To crunch in between Monday night, when I'm working, Tuesday when I'm working. I have Wednesday off, that's my day, I cannot read an entire packet and the financial reports in one day. But for me, so I would prefer it to be the second. Thursday of every month, which is what my motion stated. And I'm also going to be bringing forward counsel. To to, um, amend those minutes from that meeting, because my motion was not stated properly in that meeting. And nor my second motion that night that included more requests for what I wanted in the report. Which was. Approved by the council, wasn't mentioned in the minutes at all. So I will be bringing those back to the council for review. That's where I stand, and, uh, if the council agrees, we can open the floor for. Finance director to participate.
Well, this is the finance report, so I think it's appropriate that we need to counsel for once, so, Colleen, is that something?
Yeah, I have something to say, I would like to know why, one day different from everything happens to me turned in, and it's targeted at my time. He said he wanted the weekend to happen, then everybody agreed, yes, he wanted to begin, so why a Thursday instead of a Friday? Everybody else is done, they're doing, are doing, right? Other than that, it's towards.
It is absolutely not towards you, Colleen, if anyone else was sitting in that seat, I would be asking for this information. It's because I can't afford to not get it until Monday. And if the packet doesn't come out on Friday, are we going to get this?
So what, what does mine have to do with it, not that you're saying it goes with the packet or doesn't go?
Uh, James was referring to it being included in the packet, you asked for everything to be in on the Friday.
That's why I mentioned one on third.
Well, well, in a perfect world.
You're talking about with Friday.
So, so in a perfect world, our goal is to have that packet out by Friday from our discussion from the work session, right? And that would include the whole hit and kaboodle that you're looking at right now.
That's true.
Which would be a great way to say the finance reports will be on Friday. We know in practice that the packet hasn't been coming out on Friday, it's going to come out the next week, so I think with Colleen, her concern is, is that. They're required by James to submit these reports to him on Friday, so. Could we change that Thursday to the Friday, because he would still have the weekend to review that act, that finance report, if the packet does not show up?
Would we get it?
You, he, what she's saying is, you would get the financial report on the Friday before the meeting.
You would get it in the agenda packet.
No, you, she, he would get it, she would get it regardless, whether it was, if the agenda packet wasn't ready.
Sorry, that's what I'm getting.
We would get it anyway, along with the one page agenda that James normally pushes on Friday. If the package is not.
I agree with you.
Is there a problem with that?
There's not a problem with that, as long as, no matter what, we are getting our packet of financials on Friday.
Okay. Okay, so it's, it's eight o'clock, but I would ask for fifteen minutes, uh, extension to go through the rest of these, uh, staff reports.
So to clarify, Colleen doesn't have to be due a day prior to everybody else, so we're okay, as long as. Staff reports are all in on Friday to counselors.
With, with the agenda.
The critical one is the financial report, because it's so lengthy, I I don't think we want the one pages from Scott and from Chief Holland, from Chief Martin. On Friday.
Unless I happen to have.
Yeah.
And you'll get everything for Friday.
Yeah. Okay. So we're okay, uh, councillor Hooker and councillor Coker, you okay with fifteen minutes?
Yep, I am.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Colleen and I had a couple of questions, and just, just. Basic, I noticed on the general fund that. On the year-to-date actuals, you actually inserted. Either an expect or unexpected, or what we best think the beginning fund balance was. On the very first line of the budget. See where I am?
Beginning of revenue.
Page one on your report, and it's the, it's the very first line, which is beginning fund balance. So, so we put in a, you know, we budgeted for three or four, and we put in that number as a year-to-date actual. Right next to it, you notice that?
Yeah.
So that's not, but but it's not consistent in all the funds, so like, if you go to the. O I P fund, or you go to the burdens and services fund, that number is not in the year-to-date actuals, and I I just don't know if that would tighten up the numbers at all if we did that.
Oh, I, yeah, and that was something that I was thinking of. I I think I started on that, and so what the purpose of that was, so that. When we get to the bottom.
Yeah.
Actually, the numbers are staying, so yes, that was, that is something that I will.
Put in the other funds.
Yes, and I wrote.
Great.
Yeah.
And then I did have a question, uh. Page two. About. Uh, charges for service revenues, the imposed public safety fee. The number in the year-to-date actual doesn't match your report. So I don't know if that's just a translation thing or what, but.
No, that's why we did the report.
Okay.
Because, um, the usually actual is what we build out.
Yeah.
The report shows that actually, I mean, yeah.
Oh, I guess, okay. And then I I had one question about, on virtually every department. Under personal services expenditures, you have a line item called wages, but then we also break out individual salaries, so what is that wages number?
So in the new budget, we're going to have, and in my new. Pay, um, system, the wages are going to be by department.
Okay.
Um.
Long together?
Yes.
Okay.
Department head, and I can fill reports for individuals that way so that they can track it. So I tried, remember you asked me, you were like, how come you only kept so much done?
Yeah.
Well, my new system pulls it this way. So I tried to sit and break it all out, and it took me like forever to do February schedules, and I was like, forget it, I can't do it.
Understand.
Because it comes out one way, and then I literally have to sit there and like, break it all down for person.
Yeah.
But that's why I'm saying.
Okay. So I had on the financial report, any last question, please?
Um, when, do we have a projection on a final audit presentation to council?
That's next week.
Yeah.
Well, I thought it imagined, right?
Yeah, but then there should be a formal presentation to council.
Yep, all the same, all the same, I thought.
Then, no.
It will be presented at the audit meeting, that's a presentation from the auditors, that audit will be final.
So there should be a presentation to an audit committee, and then the audit committee reviews it, and then after that, it is presented to council.
Correct, the audit, right?
With the on.
Maybe I'm confused, the audit will be official, final, and presented by the auditor at the next audit committee meeting.
Yes, and then after that, usually the auditors come to a state council meeting and it's discussed with the council. In a public meeting.
Actually, I think it's the audit committees. That gets the meeting with the auditors, and then they do a summary to present to council.
I can say positively, we have had the auditors in the last. Twice that I know of, given a full audit presentation, and that was the process that I was taught.
I've always, I remember.
I know that that's happened. That was done yearly, I believe, the last couple of years. There's a, there's a policy on it, how it's supposed to be done.
James, can you look and see if there's actually a policy that the auditor has to present for the city council?
So when there's detailed questions from counselors, how does the audit committee answer those questions, they're not skilled in auditing, so.
Right, but, um, they can't, the. The council, after you receive your audit and the, um, summaries from the audit committee, if you have any question, you are welcome to contact the auditor director. I, I can say from this time. Of being on council, I can't remember a, a single time since twenty nineteen that our auditors. Presented to the council.
Agree.
Since when?
I started this session in twenty nineteen, August.
I'm positive that the auditors have attended council meetings, so.
I think that might be what you're thinking of, is when we were interviewing them.
Mm-hmm.
No, they actually brought the Spiral Brown presentation to the council, Don Hadley was there, and he was not on the audit committee, and there were questions. On the audit in a public session, in a public environment.
That might have been before I started. You, you came on board about a year before me.
I came on board in two thousand and nineteen.
Well, regardless, James, if you could find if there's any policy for.
January.
Okay, um.
So, but my question is, how do counselors that are not on the audit committee? Ask questions in a public session with public press present to the auditors?
I would encourage all sponsors to attend the audit meeting, it is open to public.
Come to back then. The problem is with that, if multiple counselors are asking questions, then it's no longer an audit committee meeting. It's a city council meeting, and there's multiple counselors there. That's why, that's why it's, uh, maybe. So that's why we always had it at council meeting.
Well, I think we established it's not always, because it hasn't happened. So I just think we need to find what policy is, and let them come back to us. And make it efficient.
Well, if it wasn't in policy, I think it should be that way, so that all counselors are able to ask questions.
Right now, it may not be.
Is there an exception to the budget committee? Oh, council, your budget.
Because of budget.
It's a budget committee.
There's a major budget committee, but. Um, public meetings law for counselors, when more than, when more than four counselors are present.
Four or more.
I said, when more than four, uh, four or more are present, it's, um, it's different, it constitutes a. For.
So the meeting has to be noticed, which it is, reported, which is.
But it's noticed as in the audit committee meeting, it's not noticed as a city council meeting. And we're not members of the audit committee, other than councillor Kenyon and one other.
That's the, beyond.
So that's the problem, where the budget committee is, we're already members, all of us are already members, so when you notice that it's proper. Okay, um, fifteen point three, Chief Hollis?
Um, you guys have my, uh, report, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I'd like to mention that, I just received a, a report from. Um, the Department of State, the Division on our G E S T program. And it looks like we will have a thirty percent increase in both. Um, the G M P key for service program and a thirty percent increase in the. Uh, C C O program. So, should see some action dollars.
So, I think Robert. Chris mentioned that. Chrisman mentioned that the emergency generators were operating properly. So when when the power got off, did it operate the HVAC system in the fire department as well?
Um, I didn't get a report from the staff that was on you.
Yeah.
So I'm not.
Because obviously ten, I think, was to include the environmental system.
Yeah, it was. I'll I'll check with the.
Great. Any questions of Chief Hallid before we move on? Okay, fifteen point four, Public Works, James, who you know, is is Robert Rivera on the.
I I totally it's not required.
Okay. So any questions of James on the public works support? So I had to see Jack Stone go in a fixture. Um, normally the snowflakes aren't, weren't they previously removed by Lain Electric? Are we doing it now?
Uh, they were removed by the electric.
Okay, we just saw.
Yeah, we are now storing that he used to be stored by the city of Westford.
Yep.
Um, and you're no longer allowed to do that, so.
They still have the courts?
Yeah.
The old one or?
Your one. There are, there is a committee of volunteers that fix them up, change my votes, etc.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions of James, please?
I have a question. Chief that I forgot to ask Chief Mark this year was. Yes, I have to email him and say I can't remember what question was.
Okay. Moving on, fifteen point five, the rain three-year impact report twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. James, I know it's here for info, but any comments?
Uh, no comments. I'm just trying to.
Okay. Sixteen is other business, and there's nothing. I'll go ahead.
I thought it was a question. It's actually for you. I I heard through a citizen community contacted me and said that we have a position open for a police officer. Have we lost an officer?
No, it's always been budgeted for.
So it would it would bring us up to five total officers.
Including Chief.
He's six, but two.
Now, so we got.
Michael, two.
Oh, if you include Michael.
Yeah.
Then then, yes.
Michael is chief, and right now we're running with only three officers.
Right. Halloween, Miller, Carolyn, Sergeant, Sergeant, Jane Anderson. And then Chief.
I thought we were introduced about a year ago to a three new officer. Oh, one. Okay, that's where I'm confused. I thought we filled out a department. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're down to public comment. Any public comment on the Zoom platform? I've seen anything in the room. Oh, we got one. Ms. Hammond?
Yes, sorry, that took me a minute to find it. Oh, Trudy Hammond, O K R Jorgen. And I was wondering about if any of the vehicles from the impound lot would be included in that rummage sale that's possibly going to be at the WAC.
It's possible. They're definitely worth less than five hundred dollars. I promise, a lot of them, we we have asked and asked for years to have them released as evidence because the cases are over. People have already served their time if they serve. So we need a release from the vehicle's office to release anything that's impounded or held evidence. Also request a guy, we can't get a response to a new staff, etc., but we can't release it. Nobody, they don't make them.
Oh, so I'm curious as to what's going to happen with them if the property sells, then? If that that property is bought by someone, are they stuck with all that stuff?
No, that would have to be moved to the new evidence. It happened.
Okay. Okay. I had something else, but I can't find it in my notes. But, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any comments in the room? With that, we will bring the meeting, motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
Okay, motion adjourned at eight fifteen. Thanks, everybody.